For coming tonight, this is the City Council Redevelopment Agency meeting of Monday, April 11th, and I'd like to ask you to first rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I apologize for the meeting starting late this evening. We had a joint planning commission and city council meeting prior to this meeting that started at 6:00, and as you can tell, it ran a little bit over, so I appreciate your patience and again apologize for the delay in starting this meeting. Next, second item on our agenda this evening is any changes to the order of the agenda. Are there any changes from staff?
No, Madam Mayor.
Fellow council members? Anyone from the public like to request a change? Okay. Under item three, report from closed session, we did not actually have a closed session. We will convene after this meeting to our closed session, but it's a conference with legal counsel regarding litigation. Next item under council reports. Are there council reports?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yes, thank you. I'd like to report that I had the pleasure of attending the Peninsula Council of Lyons 40th Annual Police and Firefighters Awards banquet last Friday, and two of our own were honored. Gregory Navi, who is a firefighter with South County, and he was honored for the work he has done during the Christmas toy drive. He had a phenomenal turnout and generated a large number of guests, which are very much appreciated. And then Nick Nguyen, who is a patrol officer for the police department, he was distinguished for the number of arrests that he made on those driving under the influence. So he has established himself as a key detector of those who might have had a little bit too much and are trying to get home. Both of those represented us well, and it was a pleasure to be at that event. The other issue I have is regarding our Assist the City program. We have an art exchange that is in process, and Ocotokes will be coming to our area the latter part of April, and they'll be bringing 30 paintings from Ocotokes, and they will be on display here in City Hall. Those paintings you see out in City Hall will be going back to Ocotokes and be a part of an exhibit in Ocotokes beginning May 1. And then along about the middle part of June, someone from here, hopefully the mayor, will be going up there for a reception, and will bring back the paintings to Ocotokes and return ours to us. So it's going to be a great event, and we're going to have a reception April 30 from 4:00 to 6:30 here in City Hall. We'd encourage all the council members and public to attend, and we'll have a grand time trading art stories with the Ocotokes representative. One other thing on this Assist the City program, our delegation of four will be going to Nicaragua next Sunday. We'll be spending the week there, and we'll have a lot to tell you about San Carlos, Nicaragua when we return. And that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Matt?
Thank you. Yeah, the airport roundtable, when the last time we met, we approved a draft of our memorandum of understanding, which was looked at and rewritten, and some changes made to it. And that will be coming then through all the city councils for approval. And so I wanted to make the mayor and staff aware of that, so that we can agendize that item when it does come through. And I suppose someone from staff may want to contact the airport roundtable staff to get an idea of the timing of that, just so that we know and don't have too full of an agenda for that evening.
Okay, thank you. Don, do you have anything?
Two matters. One is the Police Activities League in our town, which does a wonderful job in terms of creating opportunities for young people and sometimes keeping them out of trouble, sometimes giving them great advice. It's having a fundraising dinner on May 4th. We'll be at the library. If there's anyone who would like to attend, tickets are available with the police, or some of us actually have tickets ourselves. The second thing I'd like to report...
Turn on your mic.
I'm sorry, I didn't turn that on. The second thing I'd like to report is on the Bay Area Economic Forum, which I'm a member of, had its meeting just last Friday, and there were actually two new San Carlsens on that board besides myself. Chris DiGiorgio, who is the managing partner for Northern California Accenture, the consulting company, is on there representing the business community. And Ted Lempert, who is the president of Children Now, who's a former assemblyman, is also new to that committee. And this forum is, I think, one of the few, if not the only one, who really delves into on a serious basis issues that relate to the economics of how the Bay Area functions. And not to bore you with some of these things, and some of these are statewide issues too, but they certainly relate to the Bay Area. Anything from the state electricity market reform, I'm just reading off the agenda here, the state trading services, state nanotechnology task force, Indian Science and Technology Program is in the country of India, the California stem cell headquarters and how that debate is going, entrepreneurship in Silicon Valley, the future of California manufacturing, the Hetch Hetchy Valley restoration, the Bay Area-China connection, the governor's budget, and even health care reforms, and we've dealt with other issues such as workers' compensation, a number of the things that affect in a bigger picture, more of a macroeconomic standpoint. And it's a wonderful thing to be a part of, and again, I'm happy that we have two new San Carlsens.
Thank you very much. Don, Mike, do you have anything to report?
Two quick ones. One, the $50,000 at the last C-KAG meeting that we questioned is coming forward. C-KAG did approve it, the last final payment.
And that's for which project?
For the Scoot project, so it's coming because there was a question here. And then the second point I want to bring up is that we've also, the county of Santa Clara has approached us with C-KAG and specifically San Carlos about the $4 NPDES fee. It has gained wide and very significant interest, and specifically from Joe Semidion's office, who's trying to promulgate it to other parts of the state. And we, as One Cities, have been approached because of the background on NPDES.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple of quick items. The first is, I wanted to mention that we had a wonderful dry groundbreaking celebration over at Arguello Park. We've finally started to break ground on our last and final park renovation. This council has actually approved $1.5 million towards the renovation and upgrade of Arguello Park, so that's going to be happening over the next couple of months. So I know several of my fellow council members, as well as several of our parks and recs commissioners, were there, as well as actually Senator Joe Semidion. And at that groundbreaking ceremony, we also, I presented Joe with a proclamation thanking him for his efforts in helping to assist in securing some funds for that project. So that was a very nice event, and the weather held off, so it was at least dry. The other thing I wanted to report is that we did hold interviews this evening before our joint meeting for our senior advisory commissioner, senior advisory board, and we had two very talented, well-qualified applicants. Unfortunately, we only have one opening. So the council will be appointing Dan Belloc to our Senior Citizens Advisory Commission. So looking forward to having him join that committee. And then finally, I'm sure my fellow council members received this, but I thought it was very interesting. I received what's called the Bay Area Poll, and it says for San Mateo County, the three most important problems facing the Bay Area today in San Mateo County came in, 26% said the economy, 19% said transportation, and 18% said housing, and specifically affordable housing. And I thought that was very interesting. It's contrasted to some of the East Bay, where transportation was very clearly the number one issue in the East Bay. And in San Francisco, San Mateo, and Santa Clara counties, it was the economy. So it was just, I thought, a very indicative poll of what's going on in both San Mateo County as well as local counties around us. And with that, I'm going to move on if there's no more council reports. Okay. Item five on our agenda this evening is a presentation of a ceremonial check from PG&E. This is a fairly substantial rebate check that we've been able to get from PG&E for our city's photovoltaic project at the Corporation Yard. And I just want to say in advance that hats off to staff who had put this together, because it's wonderful to see a renewable energy source actually being used here in San Carlos, and the check just makes it that much nicer. Richard, would you like to make a presentation?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I don't want to make a presentation, but I would like to introduce the external team that helped us with this, both from PG&E and EMCOR and SHOT Applied Power, which is the manufacturer of the photovoltaics panel, and present a check to you. Mark Bettis is with SHOT Applied Power, the maker of the photovoltaics, and also representing EMCOR, that was the contractor that you awarded the contract to last July. Stephanie Isaacson with PG&E, and Kathy LaVizo, also from PG&E. So everyone in the city.
Thank you. I'm here to present...
Turn around this way. I'd just like to say briefly, thank you so much for the City of San Carlos for partnering with us in this wonderful opportunity. Obviously shown wonderful leadership in the area of the self-generation initiatives, the solar initiatives. We really congratulate you on your leadership and working with staff and working with the SPHE. It was really a pleasure. I hate to say that I was not involved in this except the check presentation, so I appreciate the opportunity to come out today and meet you all and present this. But thank you so much.
Well, thank you very much. And for those who may not be able to read this from home, this is a ceremonial check. It's $215,000, which is a substantial amount. That's in addition to the savings and financial and economic and environmental benefits that the photovoltaic project at our Corp yard is going to bring to the city. So thank you very much to PG&E as well. Okay. Next item on our agenda this evening is public comment. This is a period of time, 10 minutes maximum, for persons who wish to address the city council and items not on the posted agenda. I do have a speaker slip from John Hoffman. John, would you like to come to the microphone? And if there's others, please, if you have an opportunity, fill out a speaker slip. It helps us in preparing the minutes.
My name is John Hoffman. I reside at 909 Crestview, Carlos. First of all, Madam Mayor, council members, I want to say thank you, you previous council members, for the great achievements that you've made, two of which are the youth center and the new library. I am here to ask for council support of the idea of an addition to that. That would be your consideration for drive-by drop-off box. There are a couple of reasons for this. Number one, great convenience for patrons of the library, minuscule cost, overall picture, substantially less than $10,000. It is, in fact, a little bit safer way to turn books versus shopping, even their cars with engines running and frequently open, turnbooks in the building. And I guess really the most important reason is because overwhelmingly in a poll conducted, San Carlsens, other patrons of the library, i.e. Belmont, who buy the construction, say that they would like to have, out of 224 responses, two people said no. That means that a little better than 99% said yes, and I think that's a clear indication of... The cost works out to about seven cents per citizen, per year, sorry, seven cents per citizen, per year, over a five-year period. And that's about the length, the minimum length of time. I have done research. You were provided earlier with copies of the poll. There are suppliers of these boxes, got the figure of costs, and I know the approximate cost for installation, very substantially less than $10,000. Also have letters from post ministers here in San Carlos saying what a great thing the drop-off for the mail is at the back of the post office. And I interviewed each of the city-owned libraries who have drive-by drop-off boxes. Universally, they say the public loves them, can't give them up. It would be a good idea, I think, to ask that to consider this, and if someone would either through manager or else come back and let go what part of the council, you?
Thank you very much for your time. Matt sits on our, represents the city on our library JPA. Is that correct, Matt? So perhaps at our next council meeting, you might be able to give a brief council report on, because I know this has come before the JPA, and I thought it was up for vote.
May 2nd.
So the JPA, it's up for a vote at the JPA on May 2nd, so, okay. The next item on our agenda this evening is consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Fellow council members, do you have any items to be removed? I have a request for item B.
B as in boy.
B as in boy. Anyone else? Anyone, staff, Mike, Brian?
No, Madam Mayor.
Or anyone from the public?
Madam Mayor, I would move the consent calendar items A, C, D, E, and F, and item C, adoption of the ordinance number 1356, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code, deleting sections 5.60.020 and 5.60.030 for commercial advertising.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilmember King and seconded by Councilmember Eaton. Christine?
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Mayor Seagull Doherty?
Yes. Okay. Agenda item 7B, which happens to be actually our minutes from our last meeting of March 28th. Matt?
The reason I pulled these is because I wanted to point out to the council, I know we discussed reducing the minutes in their verboity, or how much is written at one time. And we talked about going to what are called action item minutes, which pretty much just give the motion, and then the vote, and not too much else. When I read through these, I was a little dismayed, because I know we have, in fact, I'll ask the question, when we keep things on record of tape records and video records and so forth of council meetings now that we're televised, how long those are kept as records? I'm not sure.
Those are permanent records, as far as...
Tapes are?
Yes. Actually, the audio tapes, we were destroying after a year. But now that we have the televised council meetings, I believe those are going to be archived permanently.
Permanently, okay. And I know Don has said this before about, you know, well, there's always the record on tape of some kind or another, whether it's audio/video, or audiovisual, or just the audio tape. But when I read through these, they are so sparse and unspecific that my concern is that the written record is at least, if someone comes to Christine's office and says, "I'm researching a certain issue. I want to know about what happened with the kind of action the council took," or so forth, it might be a little difficult to find the item if you consider what's written here as an index. The reason being, for instance, under public comment, it just gives the person's name, but it doesn't say what they talked about in terms of a topic. So if there could be just a simple line that said, just picking somebody from last week, you know, Wayne Thompson, Redwood City, and he spoke on, you know, just some kind of headline, so that you could follow through on that. In the, under item seven, when we were talking about industrial road, it says that Mr. Avett responded to questions from Councilmember Growcott regarding invoices on the project. Well, the invoices were regarding Mactari Engineering, so that, again, there's no specific, there's nothing there that's specific. Somebody could read that and think, "Oh, those aren't the ones I want," because there's nothing there to tell them that that's what the topic was. So I think if we could consider, I'm not asking necessarily to have these rewritten. You've already written them. It's a lot of work to go back and rewrite them. I understand that. But if we could think in terms of these being an index that someone might want to use, you know, a person's probably going to go to the written record first to find what it is they're looking for if they're researching something.
Christine, would you comment?
Matt, I'm not sure if you were of the indexing that we have now. You want to comment about?
Right. Now, if a member of the public were to come to our office trying to find something we can easily find with our new document management system, any issue that they're looking for. In the minutes, if...
Can I speak louder?
If that word you're talking about is missing, of course, we can't find it in the minutes. But the reason we went to the action minutes is to save time, also because we do have the video now. So if someone was looking for specific information on a specific agenda item, we could, you know, easily pull it up off the television and let them view it.
How is that? Could you just briefly explain how that would work?
In our office?
Yeah.
Well, they would just come in, and if they wanted to view the television, they would just come into our office and look at the internet. It's archived on the internet. So it's not a tape. In the old days, we had an actual...
Right, I've used it, yeah.
VHS tape. And before that, we had an audio tape. But now we have the internet, so we have desks available if anyone, or they can go to the library and look at it.
Brian, I know you're dying to jump in here. Do you want to explain this thing?
Well, as the city clerk said, that's correct. The way the minutes, the meetings are set up now is you can view them from start to finish on the internet if you wish, by date. You can also watch the mayor's summary or the vice mayor's summaries, the case may be, on there as well. And then you have the option of jumping to the agenda item that you want, and you can watch that item specifically. And we have utilized that recently on some occasions where, for example, a member of the public, or a member of the press, or someone else was not able to attend the meeting. We now can say to them, and I have on several occasions recently, I've given them the exact agenda item and said, you know, "Go to the website, look at that item, and you can see exactly what the council said or didn't say." And I think that's a very powerful feature, because then obviously, you know, there's no interpretation involved. They can see exactly what was said.
Okay, now, if I can follow up on that, Brian and Christine, either one. I can understand where that would work if someone came in within, you know, two weeks, three weeks, four weeks, maybe even a month. As far as using the internet in that way, how far back can somebody go and do that? And a second question, what about the person who does not have, you know, not everybody has a computer, not everybody has internet access, so what...
They have access to the library, though.
Yeah, I was just going to say, to follow up on the mayor's point, they can view it at the library, they can view it in Christine's office, any school, any place where there is access. And as far as the videos, they'll be online for a year. And also, they are indexed by keywords, so that if the person knows the keyword topic, they can go in there. And in addition to that, obviously Christine has the minutes and the agendas in the document management system. And the other change that I would mention as well, which I think is significant, is starting, I believe it was last year, we began to also permanently index all the staff reports that relate to each agenda item. Christine and I had a discussion about a year ago when we were working with the records retention consultant, I believe the person's title was, about the issue that Councilmember Growcott raises, about the context of an item and understanding better the action the council took. And it was Christine and I's discussion that even if you had the minutes and the agenda and the resolution, that sometimes even that's not enough. And so we felt by permanently archiving the staff report and all the attachments, that that would give the person doing the research even more material than they've had historically.
Okay, so then if it's on for a year, what do you do if, after a year passes?
In terms of the videos, we have a DVD copy that I understand Christine is planning to save beyond that point. But for the 12-month period, they would be online, so anybody who had online access, either at home or library, et cetera, could access them instantly. For those after a year, they could visit the clerk's office.
May I ask a follow-up question? I know that in the past, we've seen a document, like a document retention policy that states, you know, certain types of records are kept for certain periods of time, and permits are kept, you know, ad nauseam forever. So things like what Matt's talking about, I mean, maybe this is a question for Bob, are we required by law to retain minutes? Or, I know we had the audio tapes for a long time. Were we required to retain them for some period of time?
Permanently. And I believe that what the city clerk is indicating is that now that we can condense the meeting, if you will, to CD, that those will be, you know, not very difficult to archive indefinitely in the future.
What Brian's talking about is essentially they're available through the internet, through the city's website, on a self-service type basis for a year.
Correct.
And then after that point, they would be archived, and there would need to be a request made through the city clerk's office for retrieval of that videotape.
Correct.
However, everything else under the document retention system, the staff reports, the minutes, and everything else, would be archived still within the city's servers and backed up?
Well, what we had done prior to the record retention program is we had been permanently archiving the agendas, minutes, and the resolutions, I believe. Is that correct, Christine?
Correct. We've got, we've got minutes, resolutions, and ordinances forever since day one, 1925. The full agenda packet, we don't have that far back. We've only got about 20 years, I believe. And, but we've got a retention schedule for, we've got a retention schedule for just about, or about every document in the city, and that's what we worked on the last couple of years.
And so that's actually, that's archived electronically? So it's available electronically, or it's actually, it's paper copies?
All of our, all or most of our minutes, resolutions, and ordinances are electronic in our system.
Okay. So they were the original paper copies that have been scanned in?
Right. We're working, we're, it's called back filing. We're working on the back filing as we go on, and that's a matter of scanning, indexing.
Okay. Super.
Okay, well, I'm glad we had the discussion, because I was unaware. And I do think it's important that when we keep records, these are records for the public, they should have access to them, and it should be pretty simple and clear how to look something up. So I still would think, though, on these minutes, if there could be a little bit more, like for instance, again, when someone from the public speaks, if there could just be a topic line of what it is they talked about. Because again, not, I know it's available in the library, but if somebody wanted to go to the library and look at some things that were in there, and, you know, some of us are old school, and some of, you know, Don has his little Palm Pilot, and I still use it, this is my idea of a notebook. So I would still make that request, if it doesn't put too much work on the city clerk. With that, I would move approval of item 7B.
Second.
I have a question on this subject.
Well, Bob, why don't you come to the microphone, then? Well, Bob, why don't you come to the microphone, then?
Sometimes we...
Sorry, name and city resident.
Oh, I'm Bob Black, 585 Dartmouth Avenue. Sometimes we prepare testimony either for the time before or after council meeting or during a council meeting. And sometimes we prepare written testimony. What happens to that written testimony?
It is filed with the council agenda packet. If it's simply correspondence to the council, it's held for two years and then destroyed after that. But the council packets, as we just discussed, are held permanently.
And would it be of any convenience to have it in electronic form?
It doesn't matter one way or the other. We'll keep it for two years.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's been a motion and a second. Would you...
Councilmember Growcott?
Yes.
Councilmember King?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Eaton?
Yes.
Mayor Teagle Doherty?
Yes. Okay. The last item on our agenda this evening before adjournment is public comment. Is there anyone else from the public that wishes to address the council on an item not on the posted agenda? Meeting's adjourned.
Too close, should have to do it here.
To a closed session. Thank you.